Hello, welcome back to Bridge in the Gap. We're going to take this actual setting to go over our last council meeting as far as the public comments and actually the council comments. And we're about three weeks away from the election. And again, I mean, if you've been following Bridge in the Gap, we've been going over several things and we've been doing interviews and we've been talking about voting for or against Question A here in Wycomico. Now again, what that is, is if you vote for it, you're removing the executive form of government from Wycomico County and going back to our councilmatic. Now, if you vote against it, then you keep the executive form of government and you keep the council, but you keep that elected official that you elect as the executive and it wouldn't be somebody handpicked by the council. So with that in mind, again, there's been a lot of things that go back and forth on Facebook and all different forums and things like that, but we had a great forum last week that we actually shared on Bridge in the Gap, but now we're going to get an opportunity to hear from some of the community and we're going to hear from the council. So sit back and enjoy and I hope you get some good information from this Bridge in the Gap.
Hi, I'm Holly Hilligas, CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County and a resident of Wycomico County in Salisbury. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the introductions of the two pieces of legislation that you introduced today. It seems that offering a tax exemption for the airplane landing strips and then in the next one saying we want to take away tax exemptions, it seems to me that that's showing some type of favoritism when my opinion is that we need more incentives across the board for businesses to locate here. So if the intent is to modify the Horizon program so that it can expand across Wycomico County and perhaps reduce the barrier, so that $10 million investment, to reduce that perhaps down to 2 million. If it had been 2 million and perhaps less restrictive, then our project in Fruitland might have qualified. So we had to raise 1.8 million. I'm still paying off developers for the project there. So there needs to be an expansion of tax credits that will bring more jobs because we need, we've lost so many employers over the last 20 years. And there's rumor that another large employer is going to be laying off half of their staff. So it's very concerning. The Health Department already shared 17% poverty. I've shared with you through email, a shortage of 2,200 housing units for families that are earning under 50% of the area median income. Those are those seven, part of the 17% living in poverty. I believe that you are in office to solve problems. That's what you're here to do. You're here to serve. And I'd like to see more of that. I'd like to see you broaden it. So expand the tax incentives for development for both business and housing. Respond to the community needs, folks. That's what we're here for. That's what I'm here for. We have a waiting list right now at Habitat for Humanity of 105 families. I will forward that list to you later today. These are families that have been here that need critical home repairs. I need your help to find resources to help these families. 105 families. Multiply that by 20,000. I don't have that kind of money. I, where can I find that money? I need your help. And, and the families that need housing now, they need your help. And if that means incentives for developers across the area, then we need to figure it out. Figure it out, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilligas.
Good afternoon, Council Holly Ortell, county resident and president of the Wycomico County Firefighters Association. It's been an up and down year for us all. What I do want to do is I want to thank Councilman Baker and also Chief Twilley for working so hard for the legislative bill for the tax credit for the firefighters. That does not go unnoticed. I want to thank you gentlemen for all the supporting us and coming to our association meetings. That too does not go unnoticed. I did have a couple of phone calls probably in the last week and a half and I haven't shared them with the council people that I've spoken with, but one of the flyers, it says, "This November, help support our brave first responders by voting for Wycomico County ballot, Question A, and return the county to the council-based system and local government." Nobody reached out to me. And it's saying, you know, for our first responders. I don't know if that's for the police officers, the firefighters and EMS up in Salisbury, or if you all were talking about the volunteers. Nobody came to me. I don't believe anybody went to Chief Tyler for the Chiefs Association. And I'm personally not for it. That's just me, you know? I would love to see the council and the executive work together. If, you know, if we're out on a call, a fire call and it's up in Salisbury and Chief Frampton is running the scene and I don't like what the chief has to say, does it mean we get rid of the chief's position? Now, we all have to work together and we can do so much good as a county, working together. So many different personalities, you know? County Executive has a different personality. All y'all up there have different personalities, but we've got to work together for the residents of this county. That's what we need. We need to focus on all of us. And that's the only way things are going to get done. And when we do it, things get done. If I'm not doing a good job for our county, for the 11 companies that I represent, don't get rid of my position. Find somebody to take my position over. I mean, it's just too much time wasted. I had, had two people from your area, Shane, call me and said, "It's going to cost 30-some thousand dollars of taxpayers' money to run an ad in the paper about this ballot." Why would we do that? I don't know. If I'm wrong, please let me know I'm wrong. I just hope, you know, either which way, if people vote against it or people vote for it, either which way, that we work together. So we can work for the county and so much more can be done for all of us sitting in this room. So that's all I have to say. I thank you guys very much.
Hello. My name is Corey Houston. I'm a county resident and county employee of Wycomico County. I don't know if you guys have seen this. I know two of you probably have been preview of it. This is the original county charter from 1980. The new county charter that has been put forth, a lot of it is the same, okay? What you guys don't understand, the Director of Administration, if they make $200,000 a year in annual salary, that this, these two, the old and this county amendment, if they don't make it in the first three months or five months of their year, they get paid out the rest of that salary. That's taxpayers' money. That is going to waste because now we have to refund that position for somebody to come in. Also in here, as it states, you guys want to duplicate Worcester County, Arneith Weston-Yong, there are six positions that help him run his position, not including the department heads. In your charter, there is nobody on with your Director of Administration. So where's Laura Hurley going to go? Where's her position? Where's Lynn's position going to go? Because we have positions that are merit positions that are in the executive office. So where's that staff going to go? One person cannot run this county because I can tell you with HR issues, we have been all hands on board. And for council to meet two times a month and one Director of Administration is not going to function in this county at all. It's a waste.
Mikael Dahlien Delmar. As we approach the election, I want to reflect on this past year and look into the future. Our county faces a huge decision and many constituents like myself feel a drift amidst the contention and conflicting information. This year's been nothing short of a nightmare for myself, my family, neighbors and community, all at the hands of our current executive. Our attempts to be heard, reasoned and negotiate have been met with hostility, derision and intimidation. We were thrown headfirst into this situation and we have had to endure things no citizen should. I've heard it said that what happened to our community was the catalyst for Question A. If so, we had no idea when this all began. All the same, I never want any resident in Wycomico to experience what we have. Many who had already experienced similar abuses of power reached out to us to share their stories. We were not the first, but I hope that we will be the last. Being a cautious person, I hesitate to commit fully to voting for Question A. I spent months researching, speaking with residents and listening to varied perspectives. I reached the conclusion that I will vote in favor because the unchecked power of the executive branch is a clear and imminent danger to the people of Wycomico. I believe it is incredibly misleading to say that voting against Question A will maintain the balance of power. How can this be true when the power is so clearly skewed in favor of the executive branch? A perfect example is Safari the Quarry, in which the mayor of Salisbury wrote a cease and desist letter, the county council wrote a demand for termination, over 1,000 citizens signed a petition and the foremost environmental agencies, including the executive's own advisory board, stood against the event and yet she proceeded anyways. What clearer picture could demonstrate the out of control, rogue and bullying nature of the executive? Those of us who stood against it were subjected to personal attacks and even attempted arrest. I wanted to believe that revisions could be made to the charter to correct some of these imbalances until I learned that they had already been made and circumvented. The current executive has claimed such revisions are another power grab. It seems as is said whenever there is a challenge. I don't think a councilmatic forum is perfect, but seven people are far less likely to corrupt or to exercise dictator-like power rather than a single individual. The people of Wycomico elect these seven and they are accountable to them. Power distributed among many is much less likely to be abused than power concentrated in one. Regardless of how this vote turns out, we will have an executive for at least two more years. This is why it is imperative that we act now, no matter the outcome. Councilman James Winn proposed measures to make the executive office more transparent and accountable. I couldn't agree more and I feel that this is how it should happen. The executive should match the transparency and accountability of the council immediately. She should hold bi-monthly public meetings for which she produces an agenda and a briefing book that includes all relevant documents. There should be time for public comments aired on PAC 14. She should produce a list of all contracts, MOUs and a means of public input before they are signed. There must be a formal avenue to address grievances. We cannot wait. This is needed now. If this referendum passes, two years of being blindsided, kept in the dark and finding out about MOUs on Facebook is too long. If it does not pass, the need for these measures will be even more dire. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Robert Taylor, county resident. I want to appreciate the council moving ahead on going away with the Horizon program. Long overdue. It's time to let the developers know that the gravy train won't stop here anymore. They're going to have to make it do with the normal way of proceeding. And I would just comment to Ms. Hilligas, rather than asking for more tax breaks, let's take the money that isn't going to go to the Ross investors and isn't going to go to Gillis for their apartments and the other high-density development. Let's take that money that would otherwise go to them if they got the tax break and let's put that into an affordable housing initiative like they have in some other counties, which I think Ms. Hilligas has once suggested. I mean, that's, that's the way to proceed to solve our real housing problem, which is affordable housing. Now, I want to also comment on the Greater Salisbury Committee White Paper. I was an ag economics major. Now, I did have economics and I can tell you, the economics at the university I went to right up here, this would have failed. It's simply a comparison to two counties in Delaware that have much greater growth than we do and for obvious reasons. First of all, they're in Delaware, not Maryland. Big factor. Secondly, Sussex County has miles of oceanfront and bayfront beaches. And Kent County has the state capital, a major air force base, and it's within spitting distance of the Wilmington metropolitan area. Now, if Mr. McCain and his group really want to make us like there, wave your magic wand, bring the ocean 25 miles to the west, take the Cuxton Air Base, move that down here, take Annapolis, move the state capital down here, and yeah, we'll be like those two counties in Delaware. That ain't going to happen. We don't have any job growth here. We don't have any attraction for people and it's not because we don't have homes, it's because we don't have the attractions that they do. Very simple. Now, let's look at the people who wrote this with Mr. McCain. Let's look what they do. Austin Whitehead, Real Estate. Gillis Gilkersey, you know what they do. McCain and Associates, Appraisers. Brett Davis, Builder. Just go down the list and look at them. It's not the voice of the people. It's not vox populi. I and others are vox populi. We don't want to look like Eastern Sussex County. We like it here. That's why I moved here. I grew up across the bay and I could see what was happening there when I got out of the Navy. And I came down here to get away from that and so did a lot of other people. So let's keep it like it is. Yes, we can do some job growth if we do it reasonably, but let's face it, Swett hadn't done nothing for 30 years. And that's a big reason why we don't have it. Our manufacturing base is left. Crown Core Conceal, Dresser-Wayne, Fairchild, Campbell, they're all gone. We got to do something about that. That's how we improve, not by throwing money that goes into the bottom pockets of developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
I was saving this for when Bill McCain and Mike Dunn came to the table, but due to some of the comments that were made in public comments, I don't understand how a hotel tax credit can help the homelessness and the home building problem in Wycomico County. I understand it also says it's for multifamily units, but it's also for hotels. I don't understand how that fits. Another gentleman that got up, I was wondering where all the connection was, the Habitat for Humanity and the Ross Building, tax credit and the Horizon tax credit. I was wondering how that all connected. But I guess today, when he handed us these papers, the Habitat, he's on the board, is that correct, the gentleman on the board of Habitat, he said?
I believe.
He's also the investor in Ross.
That's the impression I get.
Yeah, okay. So I guess there's a connection. I was wondering what, I was wondering what was that? So about three years ago, the council, in a four to three vote, voted to do the Horizon tax credit. We had that under consideration now, reconsideration. But I had a phone call from a lady that was 81 years old at that time and apparently she watches, watches our council meetings. And she said, "Why are you giving a tax credit to a hotel or a motel or to the Ross Building?" When I've been paying taxes on Camden Avenue for 60-some years, her and her husband, I've never had a tax break. My taxes keep going up. And of course, I told her at that time I was not going to vote for it. So she called me back. She's still around, still watching her council meetings. God bless her. She said, "You know," she said, "I've been watching and reading the agenda." She said, "I got a 24% increase last year in my assessments on my property." She says, "I'm a widow." She says, "But I'm going to be able, the federal government's making it up for me. I'm getting a 2.5% increase in my social security this year." She said, "Things are looking up." She says, "My property taxes are going up." Yeah, I do live in Salisbury, so I have Salisbury and Wycomico. So that's where I'm at on this Horizon and the Ross Building. Why should these be given to developers who's going to sell or rent their properties at market price, but the rest of Wycomico County citizens are going to be paying higher taxes because of their assessments? So, thank you, Mr. Cole and Mr. Cannon. That's all I have.
Any other council comments?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and I think, I believe, two weeks from today is election day, right? So I think we're all aware of the issues on the table. I continue to encourage everybody to check their facts and you will not likely find much factual information on social media. Do some digging, do the research, county website, Google. Lot of credible information out there on both sides, so check your facts. A lot, a lot of misinformation is floating around out there and that's unfortunate, but it's the way it is. And again, thank everybody for coming out on this beautiful day.
Under presidential comments, I haven't made a lot of comments in reference to Question A. I support Question A, of course. But I haven't made a lot of comments. I don't want this to appear, even though the appearance of being a personal thing, because it's not a personal thing. This is about, as was stated by Ms. Campbell, it's a structural issue, which is my concern, I think, which is the council's concern and many citizens. But I have a few comments, a couple of hard and unfortunate truths, I guess, but I think it's relevant to try to get this point across to the citizens of Wycomico County. There's very limited resources they have, I think, at this time to understand the particulars of these issues in reference to the Question A. But come November, each of us in Wycomico County, we have a very important decision to make in regard to the structure of our form of government, whether we're going to continue with an executive form of government or whether we may revert back to the council, councilmatic form of government with a county administrator. The council put this on the ballot because many members of the public felt that it was necessary that we reconsider where we are today and recognize maybe what we've experienced over these past 18 years with the current form of government. We've had about $10 million is what it's cost us for this experiment over the last 18 years and we have to ask ourselves, you know, what have we seen? What have we accomplished with this $10 million? I probably, if I'm not mistaken, it was a while back, but I probably supported this initially back in 2004. So I liked, I figured, you know, well, let's see how this works. In retrospect, however, having spent most of the last several years on the actual frontline of this particular form of government, I don't believe it was the best decision for Wycomico County. In a recent forum that was mentioned earlier, it was discussed, of course, and there were a couple of concerns I had. One of them was the fact that there was a lot of talk about how the executive was just one phone call away from the governor and the executive, you know, could develop wonderful relationships with the governor, something that the councilmatic form of government couldn't do. That's couldn't be further from the truth. I've been in the governor's office before and other councils have worked very well with the government agencies, but it also led me to believe, okay, well, everyone wants to talk about how great this relationship could be. And my question was, well, what happens if it turns out that your governor is just not so fond of your executive? Because that also has been a reality. You have to wonder what happens to a particular county if that, if that particular relationship is not a good relationship. I know that when we go to Maryland Association of Counties, we go every, two times a year. And I constantly hear from people who I consider to be very strong professionals in the government business, who ask me, "John, what is happening in Wycomico County? What is going on down there?" And we laugh about it a little bit because we recognize that it is the way it is and we have to persevere and try to make it happen. But that is what I've witnessed as to what we've, what we've experienced. Another individual said, "Well, you know, management, we can't go, we can go straight to the executive to get our answer. We don't have to wait two weeks to talk to a council. We can go straight to that executive and we can get everything resolved." My thought about that is what happens when, when you go to that executive and that particular executive is not interested or concerned about your, your issues? The project that you may have been working on for, you know, for an extended period of time? You're stuck. And that's the problem, in my opinion, with the structure. You have a council that, yeah, we may only meet twice a week, but we would also have a council administrator that operated day to day to address all these issues immediately and had to report to seven-member council. Not only that, but the last time I looked, we were in the 21st century and each and every one of us has cell phones. So there you have seven phone calls that you can make, not one if you have a concern about something that you want to address. So I think you need to take that in consideration. That, to me, is a structural issue. I would also have to say that, you know, we have to ask ourselves, are we operating as efficiently and as productively as we could and are we operating as transparently as we could? In reference to employee concerns as well, their projects, their initiatives. What is actually happening, what's happening when you're seeing employees who unfortunately can be subject, subject to the proclivities of one individual? How effective are we when employees don't feel welcome by the executive? And these are realities. These, these are realities that we've experienced over the years, not only by the executive independently, but what about the authority, the authority figures who have been put in place by the executive, maybe the department heads or administration, who don't really get along with these employees? Something I've experienced, I never thought I would experience, is longtime employees coming to my office, actually come into my, my personal office, very upset, crying because they have a very unfortunate set of circumstances in their, in their employment with Wycomico County. These are long-term employment. Actually having a doctor's note stating that the doctor has told them and has diagnosed and said, "You know, you're working in a hostile work environment. I hope you know that. That's how we diagnose your concerns and I think, you know, we need to give you a note to take a couple of weeks off." So here's, here's the problem. You turn in a note that you need to take a couple of weeks off because you've been operating in a hostile work environment. This person's scared to death. They turn in that note, they feel like, you know, they're going to be, there's going to be more hostility or they could possibly lose their job. But that's a problem. And these are realities. These are really harsh realities that we've been facing over the years with the executive form of government. I don't think it's efficient and more often than not, it is not a transparent form of We also, I think, have witnessed issues and concerns and matters that don't get addressed either. When you have issues with employees in this form of government, something goes wrong, an appointment that was made to a particular person of authority and it goes really bad. I found out that through the executive form of government, the wagons get circled. I think there's more of an effort to sort of protect their interest as opposed to possibly address that problem. But the council, we witnessed this. And unfortunately, the council has little oversight because with this form of government, we can't address it as we would like to do. It's outside of our purview to address these type of issues. We've been reprimanded before and accused of overstepping because we were trying to correct issues and concerns we found with, with management and with employees. I would say one other issue that also concerns me is, let's say you have a citizen who calls, and this happens a lot, will say, "Hey, you know, John, there's a road over here and, you know, there's a problem with it and, you know, we need some, some work done to it." Or there could be some other type of an issue that a single citizen has. We found out that we're subjected to having to tell these individuals, as they're elected representatives, in this form of government. We're subjected to having to tell this person, "You have to talk to the executive branch." We're not allowed to call a department head and say, "You know, you have a problem with this." We can't do that. It's considered overstepping our boundaries. So you have to ask yourself, how fair is that to the individual? What happens if this individual just doesn't happen to be in the good graces of that particular administrative official? They're stuck. So I have to ask again, how, how fair and how efficient is that of our local government? And these aren't just council concerns with the executive's office in particular, these concerns we feel the public should have. These concerns we feel the public should have in regard to this current form of government. There are difficulties. But these are difficulties I don't think you can experience with a seven-member council. Because you have seven members who have to act, and we have to act in collaboration with each other. And we also have to act in public. So if you have a problem with the road, it's going to come right here to this table for the most part. Or any one of the members here will call that department and say, "We can take care of your problem. I'll call them right away and get it resolved." There are other issues. Say, "Well, you know, John, we have a form of government where there's a president in the White House. We have a governor in Annapolis. Why not an executive in Wycomico County?" I think the real answer to that is very, very simple. It's just not the same. The government on a local level, on a county level especially, is much more personal, and it requires much more collaboration, one-on-one. And I believe you get that with a councilmatic form of government. Whether it's with direct oversight of all the employees or the public in general, it's often described as being where the rubber meets the road. I think in that type of service and circumstances, you have to have a responsive government. You have to have individuals who have to do their job. They have to address those issues. We don't circle the wagons. And I say, let's not lose sight, however, of the fact that we're also fortunate in this regard, that we can correct it. We can correct where we are today. We can do that at the polls in November. We can correct it to a proven form of government. Again, it's about the structure, not about the personalities. We're in the eighteenth year. We have to ask ourselves, where have we gotten? Seven-member council with a council administrator. Some of the greatest successes we've experienced in Wycomico County have been the councilmatic form of government. They say that a seven-member council is inactive, doesn't work, only works two days a month. But don't forget, seven-member councils have given a Sherbrooke Stadium. They've given us a new civic center. They've given us the Henry Parker Sports Complex, the second-largest airport in the state of Maryland. A seven-member council has given us strong law enforcement and fire department presence throughout the county for many, many, many years. All built on the back of a councilmatic form of government. A seven-member council has to do all its work in collaboration at this table in front of the public. That's called true transparency, not in the collusion of a third-floor office. Budgets are decided by consensus of seven, not by personal privileges or favors of just one. And management of staff is done so by the balance and the consensus of a seven-member group of officials, together with a hired professional administrator for oversight, not by the unilateral oversight, subject to the slightest whim or predilections or temperament of just one individual. Keep in mind one other issue as well when you go to the polls, possibly the most important. In the past, with the councilmatic form of government, I don't ever recall this degree of unhealthy, toxic, character assassinations on PAC fourteen shows or Facebook posts, fabricated legal battles, or social media hysteria to which the citizens of Wycomico County have been subjected to over the past several years. I didn't anticipate it when I signed on for this job. I know I certainly didn't campaign for this type of structure. But we have that. That's what we're witnessing today. It simply isn't the best interest in good governance nor the county as a whole being doing what we're doing today. So I share this very long-winded discussion with you because I certainly don't believe we're currently operating in the most efficient, cost-effective, or transparent form of government. And it's really, really that simple. But again, we do have another option, a proven course for responsible government. And I encourage each of you to choose wisely in November. So, thank you very much.